I'm going to call the meeting to order. So, everyone, welcome to the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. And in the hall, I would ask you all to rise, but you can do what you want. Adam, can you bring up the Minuteman, please? As soon as we're done going through the screens. We're going to go through the same pomp and circumstances we usually do in the hall. This evening, we have the monotony Minuteman. Gentlemen, please rise. Whenever you're ready. It's not quite as exciting as in the hall itself, but it's still the best we can do under the circumstances. Next, we have Reverend Marta Flanagan of the First Unitarian Church, who's going to give us an invocation.
Good evening. Greetings to the 252 volunteer citizen legislators gathered online tonight. Greetings to the public servants of this town watching, to journalists witnessing, and to neighbors hoping that the needs of our time in this place be met. I am Reverend Marta Flanagan, lead minister of First Parish in the center of Arlington, the first church gathered here, but not the first religious people. Before us were those of the Massachusetts tribe who fished these rivers and ponds and who worshipped and wondered under a full moon such as the one on this night. I am honored to offer an invocation at the beginning of this year's town meeting to invoke a reminder of a spirit that moves within us and among us, a spirit called by many names. Adonai, Allah, precious Lord, Father, Mother, God, goddess, spirit of life and light, amazing grace, mystery that drew elements together after that Big Bang, that drew life itself from those primordial waters and that draws each of us to this moment. Righteous love that bends the moral arc of the universe toward justice. You are present in the eyes of children above their masks, in the men and women waiting at the food pantry, the ones standing at the bus stop, and the solitary figure pausing in the cemetery. Keep before us the needs of the time we find ourselves, the great inequities, biases of race and class, the loss of life and livelihood thrust upon so many by a pandemic, the vulnerability of this planet changing, warming, and the opportunities to serve and act for good in this place. Keep before us that call that transcends time and place to heal the sick, release the captive, free the oppressed, to love the neighbor, welcome the stranger, and walk gently upon the earth. Help us to play our part well, to speak with boldness and kindness, to listen with curiosity and patience, and to serve the great purposes that have brought us each to this work together. Shalom, Salaam, blessed be, and amen. Let the work begin.
I want to thank Reverend Flanagan for her words. It's very nice. Good evening. Welcome to the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, Arlington's 214th, our first being held in 1807. 100 years ago, in 1921, right after women got the right to vote, Victoria Dallin and Ida Robbins were elected to the Arlington Town Meeting as town meeting representatives. So, right from the very beginning, we've had women town meeting members as soon as they were allowed to vote. As a first order of business for tonight's meeting pursuant to Mass General Law Section 8F of Chapters 92 of the Acts of 2020 is to take a vote to permit virtual town meeting. So, the actual vote is as follows. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter A to F of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, a majority of duly-elected representative town meeting members hereby agree to conduct this meeting and address all articles on the warrant by remote participation utilizing the Zoom and the Z-Pedro research platforms. So, right now, we're going to actually take that vote to authorize us to use the virtual town meeting and to proceed with the town meeting in this forum. So, I'm going to ask you to do is navigate back over to the voting portal. And in a minute, Mr. Krawski is going to authorize voting. Now, a few words about voting. We're going to use the voting portal as the main vehicle to vote. You'll use, just like last year, one for yes, two for no, and then cast your vote. And you have to confirm your action if asked. If you're not able to use the portal and you're able to access Zoom, go to the chat. Go to the back to Zoom chat in Zoom and open up the chat and type in what your vote would be, yes, no, abstain. That's all you need to type. And one of the staff members, the Miss Solis or Miss Sullivan, will get that chat for you and manually enter your vote. If you can't do that, and as a last resort, you can telephone in your vote to Town Clerk Julie Brazil at 781-316-3071. So, at this point, we will be opening the chat for voting. If you can't use the Zoom platform, excuse me, the voting portal. So, Adam's going to open up voting. And you should be able to go ahead and vote to authorize us to conduct a virtual town meeting. If everybody goes over at once, we may get database issues. So, just like last year, precincts 1 through 7 will go over. And then, five or 10 seconds later, precincts 8 through 15, five or 10 seconds after that, 17 through 21. So, go ahead and cast your vote. One, yes, to use the virtual town meeting portal, and two, to not do so. Of course, if we vote against it, town meeting will dissolve right now, and we'll have to figure out how to get back and do this again. So, I'm going to ask, urge you all to vote yes. Now, this year, as opposed to last year, during the November, we left voting open for as long as it took. This year, we're going to use it for one-minute time to vote. What we found was that the people who weren't voting within the 30 to 40 seconds that it takes to vote were actually not paying attention or unclear what we were voting on. So, I'm going to try and do my best to make it clear what we're voting on, but I need you all to pay attention to vote at the right time. So, our one-minute is actually up. And there are a few folks that have not voted yet. So, I'm going to give you about five seconds. Go ahead and vote. And then, we're going to close down voting. I won't be reading through who has not voted, as I did last year. Okay, Adam, let's close voting. Okay, the motion passes. We have 235 in the affirmative, one no, and one abstention. So, the motion carries 235 to one, and it's a vote, and I so to clear it. So, we can proceed with the virtual town meeting. While that scrolls through, I'm going to finish my remarks. Procedural guidance. We follow our town bylaws and the principles and rules set out in Town Meeting Time. If you would like a copy of Town Meeting Time, please see me or email me at my email address, and I'll give you the link to Town Mass Moderator Association. Please remember to abide by our 48-hour rule. All substitute motions and substantial amendments to motions must be submitted electronically by email to me no later than the start of the session before which the article is expected to be considered. The only exception to that is this evening. Out of consideration to your fellow members and to allow a full debate, please keep your remarks as concise and brief as possible so that all members have a fair opportunity to speak. Please heed sage advice of Mr. Dougherty Andover's former moderator, who said about three minutes is enough for anyone. After five minutes, you put them to sleep, and after seven, they're going to vote against you even if they agree with you. Seven minutes is actually our time limit. If it has been said once, don't feel the need to say it again. This is especially true with the virtual town meeting. After the debate, I'll confirm that the system is ready with the display controller, then declare the voting is open. There'll be a one-minute voting period with the countdown clock. We added a countdown clock so you can see how much time you have left. If you have a question about voting, just as you would have done previously in the hall, use the point of order button, and that will bring up the point of order. You've all been provided with the Town Meeting Time pages relative to what a point of order is. Please read those, and please do not misuse the point of order as occurred last year to the frustration of us all. We're going to be using a consent agenda as was circulated last week. We'll take up the consent agenda this evening. The votes will be recorded as a vote on each individual article and on the e-voting spreadsheets. If you wish to remove an article, we have a button on the voting portal page. It says, "Remove from Consent Agenda." If you want to remove an article from the consent agenda, use the Remove Consent Agenda button, confirm your action, and then we'll see that on our screens. We have a large warrant and potentially many nights of debate ahead of us. If there is a no-action article, do not remove it unless you have a substitute motion. If you haven't prepared that substitute motion yet, I really was looking for those last week. I would have appreciated having them. Now, I'd like to take a moment of silence for all Arlingtonians who have passed away this past year, including Martin Devine and Ray Robertson, both longtime town meeting members, and Joe Daley, a past state representative who was also a town meeting member for many years. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. We're going to attempt to swear in all town meeting members who are newly elected or have been reelected. So, we're bringing up on the screen the oath of office. I'll read it out loud and insert your name where necessary. Raise your right hand and repeat after me using your own name. "I, John D. Leoni, will participate fully and fairly, evaluate all matters before town meeting, and vote in the best interest of the town. I support free speech and will treat others with mutual respect and will conduct myself in a civil manner that is becoming of an elected town meeting member. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties incumbent upon me as a town meeting member of the town of Arlington in accordance with the bylaws, the Town Manager Act, and the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So help me God." Now, if we were in the hall, everybody would stand up and clap for you. Thank you all for running and participating in town meeting. At this point, I recognize the Chair of the Board of Select, the Select Board, Mr. Stephen DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is requested that the members of the Select Board and elected officials of the town, town manager, department heads of the town and staff, superintendent of schools and staff, committees, commissions, and boards of the town, Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee, and superintendent, members of the Electronic Voting Committee and staff, members of the General Court representing Arlington, and also any consultants who have been retained to work for the town relative to articles to be acted on by this meeting, representatives of interested parties, and representatives of the news media be permitted to participate within the virtual town meeting enclosure.
Mr. Foskey, would you like to second that?
Second.
Second. Okay, let's take a, we'll take a virtual vote on that. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. So, we're going to take that as a virtual vote. Everybody just agreed to that. Thank you very much. Moderator, constable's return. Madam Clerk, do you have reason to believe that this meeting was appropriately called by the Select Board and that the constable made a return of service on the warrant in accordance with the laws?
Yes, I so certify and declare.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting as set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, April 28, 2021, at 8:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. It's a vote, and I so declare it. I don't have any announcements or resolutions at this point. Does anyone else have any announcements or resolutions they would like to offer? So, any town meeting member has an announcement or resolution they'd like to offer. Now's your chance to do that. You can do that by using the request-to-speak button on the portal. Although, that's not open. I don't think we have a chance, a way to do that. We'll have to figure that out. So, if you have any announcements, can they do it?
Yeah.
On here, Julie? Okay.
Yeah, I'll do the raise hand.
Okay, if you want to, if anybody has an announcement or resolution they'd like to offer at this time, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Okay, seeing none. Call for reports of committees. Reports have been handed in, but we're still going to have the committees offer them up so that we can accept them, and they will be properly in front of us. So, Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the report of the Select Board be received.
Second.
Second. Okay, we'll vote received of all reports at once. So, we have the Select Board's report. Very good. Mr. Foskey?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the report of the Finance Committee be received.
Second.
Can we bring Timo Jantaro up?
Timur Kai Jantaro, Precinct 7. Mr. Moderator, I move that the report of the Capital Planning Committee be received. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, want a second?
A second.
Thank you. ARB, I don't know who's going to introduce their report. Oh, Rachel.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. I move the report of the Redevelopment Board to be received.
Second.
Does any other committee have a report they want us to receive at this point in time? If so, use the raise hand feature in Zoom to get our attention. Okay, I'm not seeing any.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the recommended votes contained in the respective reports of the Finance Committee, Select Board, Redevelopment Board, and other committees be before the meeting without further motion.
Second.
Anyone oppose? If you oppose that motion, please use the raise hand feature. Otherwise, we'll take that as unanimous consent. Okay, Clarissa Rowe has raised her hand. She's opposing that. Very good. So, we have, unless Clarissa wants, oh, Clarissa wants to enter a report. Let's bring up Clarissa.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to propose that the Community Preservation Act report be before the town meeting, please.
Very good. We'll accept that report, and we'll include it in Mr. Foskey's
Second.
previous motion.
Thank you.
Okay. One last call for reports before we take a vote on that Mr. Foskey's motion to have them all before us. Okay, seeing none. So, if anyone has an objection to Mr. Foskey's motion to receive all the reports before us without further motion, if you're objecting to that, please. Oh, excuse, oh, Adam, do we have a an actual vote queued up for that?
We do have a vote queued up for the report.
Oh, let's do the vote then. I didn't think we had one. Great. So, we're going to actually take a vote on this to receive the reports. So, navigate back to the voting portal. One, to receive your reports. Two, to not receive them. And if you're having an issue, please use the chat function in Zoom. And if you cannot use chat in Zoom or the voting portal, please call Ms. Brazil at 781-316-3071. Okay, voting is now active. So, go ahead and vote. And you'll see up the upper right-hand corner of both the voting portal and the Zoom window, we have our countdown clock telling us. If you get the spinning wheel on your voting page, just hit Refresh the Page and then log your vote in again. It should work.
Mr. Moderator, we did receive three chat votes, so we're entering those now.
Okay. As soon as we get the all-clear thumbs up from Ms. Solis or Ms. Sullivan, we'll close voting. And we have everybody cleared off of the tech support lines. Mr. Lowry?
Affirmative.
Thank you. We're almost finished entering the chatted votes. Okay, we've entered all the verbal votes, so we can close voting. We have 238. We have 238 votes in the affirmative and no negative. All the votes contained in those reports now before us without further motion. That ends reports of committees. We're going to do the State of the Town, and then I believe Mr. Foskey may want to give us a verbal report on the FinCom reports. So, as soon as we run through the voting screens, which are required to show you, we will do the State of the Town address from Mr. DeCoursey.
Mr. Moderator, shall we move Article 1 to the table?
I think we're, you could do that at this point, yes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 1 be laid upon the table.
Second.
If you're objecting to Article 1 being laid upon the table, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Seeing none. Article 1 is now laid upon the table. We're gonna do Article 2 to state of the town with Mr. De Corsi's address. Think he has a video. Had acne? Here we go.
Good evening, town meeting members, elected and appointed officials, town employees and residents. I stand before you from the Town Hall Auditorium, where the seats normally would be filled tonight in anticipation of the arrival of the monotony minutemen to signal the start of town meeting. It is silent as we enter our second virtual town meeting, but there's hope we will be returning here next spring. Before I begin, I want to thank Joe Kiro for his nine years of service on the select board, and Dan Dunn for returning to the board to serve as an interim member the past two months. On behalf of the board, I also want to recognize Select Board Administrator Marie Crepelka for her 62 years of service to the town. Thank Ashley Meyer and Lauren Costa for their work in the Select Board Office, and thank Town Council Doug Heim for his role in drafting the Select Board Report and Comments. We've been through a great deal as a community over the past year. We continue to work toward achieving immunity from COVID-19. Presently, more than 51% of town residents are vaccinated. At the same time, we mourn the loss of 86 residents to COVID and the more than 570,000 persons in the United States and 3.1 million worldwide who've died from COVID. We are extremely grateful to the healthcare workers, first responders, and other essential workers who have provided services to our residents since the onset of the pandemic. Many of our town employees, particularly those in the police and fire departments, put themselves at risk to provide services to the community without interruption. Thank you to all town and school employees for your service to the community. Special recognition is in order for our Health and Human Services Director Christine Bonjono and her team for the COVID updates and continued guidance that they have provided to residents and businesses. They've overseen the administration of approximately 6,000 vaccinations in Arlington, including those provided at the regional site run at Arlington High School and through vaccinations given to homebound residents. HHS staff have also conducted contract tracing for the town's 1,827 reported cases of COVID. They've also managed the town's COVID relief fund, which has distributed more than $150,000 to local families and businesses. I also want to highlight other instances where our town and school employees stepped up to provide services to residents and to support valued organizations in town. At the regional vaccination clinics held at Arlington High School, employees from nearly every department worked together to provide a calm environment for Arlington, Belmont, and Lexington residents, healthcare workers, and first responders who receive vaccinations. To our young persons in need of mental health services, our Arlington Youth and Counseling Center transitioned to telehealth counseling last April, and since then have conducted more than 7,600 sessions with its clients. For those struggling with food insecurity, the town provided support through CDBG and CPA funding to the work provided by our valued outside partners Food Link and Arlington Eats. In addition, the Council on Aging coordinated food deliveries for more than 7,000 meals delivered by Arlington Eats. In coordination with volunteers and council on aging staff, our police department distributed thousands of PPE to residents of housing authority properties, to Arlington Eats recipients, and to residents in need. Our veteran services agent Jeff Chunglo collected over 16,000 donations of PPE for distribution to hospitals, assisted living facilities, and nursing homes. The Planning Department coordinated the distribution of approximately $1.1 million in CDBG and CPA grant funds for tenants and local small businesses. Our town manager, Adam Chapdelane, and his management team provided strong leadership and kept the community informed through his periodic COVID updates. Also, in the midst of the pandemic, we are encouraged to see the new Arlington High School, the cost of which has been supported through the generosity of our taxpayers, rising on Mass Ave. As I stand here today, the state of our town is strong. It is resilient. Notwithstanding this, we face many challenges ahead that need to be addressed through collective action. The murder of George Floyd last May in Minneapolis brought the issue of systemic racism to the forefront locally, across Massachusetts, and throughout our nation. It forced us to engage in difficult but necessary discussions in recognition of needed reforms to the criminal justice system and to address racial disparities in areas such as healthcare, education, and housing. There remains much work to be done locally, regionally, and across our country in moving toward a society that is free of systemic racism and racial inequities. Toward that end up locally, I want to recognize the work of our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Director Jillian Harvey. Jill has been a leader in coordinating the community conversations that will continue again this year. She's also been instrumental in implementing racial equity seminars for our employees and the racial justice teach-ins that many residents participated in this past winter. I also want to add a note on steps taken locally by our police department under the leadership of Chief Flaherty. Last June, in furtherance of its community policing model, the department adopted a duty-to-intervene policy and updated its de-escalation and training standards, which along with pre-existing policies already in place, brought the department into full alignment with national use-of-force reforms that were called for at that time. In recognition that this remains an ongoing process, however, Chief Flaherty stated the department's commitment to continuously review internal policies to see how they may be advanced to reflect what the community expects of the police department and what the department expects of its officers. Other challenges we will face in the coming years concern how we will fund the cost of providing core town and school services as well as priorities such as the creation of affordable housing. Town meeting will be presented with a balanced budget for fiscal year 2022. We must be mindful, however, that there are storm clouds ahead. The Finance Committee report contains a five-year plan summary that shows sizable deficits beginning in fiscal year 2024. As town leaders, we must work together to minimize the projected deficits and make sound decisions for our community while also providing the best services possible to our residents. The work we perform over the next year will be critical to address these challenges. In closing, town meeting will be asked to vote on 91 warrant articles this year. In our current virtual meeting environment, this will require collaboration, patience, and respect for differing points of view. As we begin tonight, I am once again reminded of the words of our late Select Board Member Kevin Greeley and similar words spoken by the late Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. "We can disagree without being disagreeable." I hope we take these words to heart in our deliberations this year. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, you muted.
Yep. Oh, shoot. Right, am I? Can you not hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. I see two points of order. Actually, I thanked Mr. De Corsi for his, his words. And I have two points of order. I just want to tell them before we take those two points of order that we, I realized we laid the wrong article upon the table. We should have laid Article 3 on the table. If that's Mr. Warden's point of order, we're going to address that right as soon as Mr. Foskett gives his report for the FinCom. But Mr. Warden, what's your point of order? You can unmute John.
Unmute.
Yes.
Okay. You hear me now, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I can, sir.
Thank you. Though the point of order was the very one you mentioned. It was Article 3 that gets laid upon the table, not Article 1, which is the
Yes, I had a typographical error in my agenda. I apologize for that.
As long as we get it right.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So now, now we're gonna hear from Mr. Foskett, who is gonna present the FinCom report to us. Mr. Foskett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charlie Foskett, Precinct 8, Chair of the Finance Committee. Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members, and elected and appointed officials. The pandemic shutdown notwithstanding, the Finance Committee members have been working diligently from February of this year with town and school management to prepare the budget that's before you tonight. I want to thank Town Manager Adam Chapdelane, Deputy Town Manager Sandy Poole, Superintendent Kathy Bodie, School CFO Michael Mason, and their respective teams for their cooperation and support for the Finance Committee during these unusual times. And also for their success in maintaining a high level of town and school services for our community. I'd also like to identify and thank the members of the Finance Committee. Precinct 1, Grant Gibbian. Precinct 2, Shane Blundell. Representing Precinct 3, John Ellis. Representing Precinct 4, Makaya Healy. Precinct 5, Mary Margaret Frankelmont. Precinct 6, Arif Padaria. Precinct 7, Jonathan Wallach. Precinct 9, Brian Beck. Precinct 10, Peter Howard. Precinct 11, Shailene Pokriss. Precinct 12, Daryl Harmer. Precinct 13, John Dice. Precinct 14, Alan Jones. Precinct 15, Annie La Court. Precinct 16, Bill Keller. 17, Al Tasty. Precinct 18, George Kosher. 19, Christine Deschler. Precinct 20, Dean Carmen. Precinct 21, David McKenna. And a special thanks to Elizabeth Diggins, our Executive Secretary. Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I'd like to address a typographical error in Article 58 on page 18 of the Finance Committee report. In the first line, the amount that reads $34,279, $279.30 should read And then below on the line following the word "voted", $39,153 should read $39,153.70. I would appreciate it if this correction could be made administratively, and we will update the, the report on the town website.
We'll make that administratively right now. So town meeting members, go ahead to page 18 of your report that was mailed to you over the weekend on Article 58. Voted, add the 70 cents in, and we'll correct that on the online one. Very good. That's made, Mr. Foskett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The good news is the Finance Committee has presented you with a balanced budget of $187,756,181, as summarized in Appendix C of our report. The elephant in the room is in Appendix D, the current long-range projection prepared by Deputy Town Manager and Finance Director Sandy Poole. In Fiscal 24, the projection forecasts a deficit of over $7 million after a withdrawal of $7.6 million from the override stabilization fund. And in Fiscal 25, this grows to $19.8 million. Without any operational savings or additional revenue, a June 23 override that would balance the budget for three years would need to be on the order of $20 million, more than three times the size of any prior override, representing a tax increase of 13.5%. To put this in context, consider Arlington's first override in the 21st century in 2005. At $6 million, this was the largest override in the state at that time. That year Arlington's budget was $96.6 million. Our total budget has grown at a compound rate of 4.2% a year to its current $187 million value. The national inflation rate during this same period has been 1.94%. So Arlington's spending has been growing twice as fast as the national rate of inflation. A somewhat different indicator is to compare net town budgets and net school budgets for Fiscal 22 versus Fiscal 12. That's only a 10-year period. The net town budget line grew at an annual compound rate of 3.1%, and the net school budget grew at a compound rate of 6.5%. Yes, I realize this is a high-level view of conflict situation. And yes, I know the school population has grown during this period, but at a rate of 2.4% a year, not 6.5%. I think it's imperative that as a community, we become more successful at constraining expense growth. In the written Finance Committee report, I suggested that town and school leaders, both elected citizens and professional management, collaborate to take what steps are possible in order to mitigate the impact of our impending crisis in Fiscal 24. The Finance Committee will be pleased to support this collaboration. I'd like to close with this observation. One of the reasons why our national inflation rate is low is because in our economy, we've been reaping the benefits of revolutions in information technology and communications and automation and other spheres. We have all seen businesses grow with leaner staffs and better service than in the past. Think about Amazon, Uber, Modern Healthcare, Khan Academy, Massive Online Course, courses.org, et cetera. There are hundreds of examples that have changed our lives. Even here in Arlington in the last year, information systems and communications have allowed Arlington to continue government and education, even in the face of the pandemic shutdown. I've been in town meetings since 1976, and I cannot recall significant expense reductions arising from productivity gains of modern technology in town and school operations, even while costs have been contained or reduced in the world around us. We do not have to continue on this path. Arlington can escape from its so-called structural deficit, and I believe that that should be our goal. I hope elected leaders, town and school management, our town and school team members, and all of our community will, with relentless passion, seek to produce superior service at ever lower costs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Foskett.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 3 be laid upon the table.
Second.
Second. We have a motion to move Article 3 upon the table. It's been seconded. If you have an objection to that motion, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Otherwise, we will consider it a unanimous vote. Okay, that's now open. They'll give you 10 seconds to object. If not... Okay, it's unanimous vote. Article 3 is on the table. That brings us to Article 4, the measurer of wooden bark. This is a ceremonial position from colonial times, although it still has relevance now. If you buy a quart of wood or a yard of bark mulch, and you don't think you got what you paid for, you would call the measurer of wooden bark. And Mr. Warden has been our measurer of wooden bark for a few years. Before that, it was Miss Elsie Fiore. We consider it a more or less ceremonial. So I'd like to nominate Mr. Warden to be the measurer of wooden bark again. Do we have any other nominations? If so, please utilize the in the participate, use the request to speak button if you want to nominate somebody else. Seeing no other votes, we are ready for a vote on that article. So taking a vote to nominate Mr. John Warden as the Arlington measurer of wooden bark. If you're in favor, please navigate back to the voting portal. Cast your vote, one for yes or two for no. Once your vote is cast, it will appear on the Zoom portal as a voted. If you're having an issue voting, please navigate back to the Zoom portal and use the chat feature to chat your vote in. And if you're telephone voting, please call Ms. Brazil at 781-316-3071. So we're now voting. Okay, we have a couple of chatted votes. They're going to be entered now. As soon as they're entered, and we got a thumbs up from Ms. Solis or Ms. Sullivan, we'll get a we'll close voting. If your voting screen's not working, please use the refresh page button. And that should, that should fix it. And that should, that should fix it. Okay, let's close voting. And we have 222 people voting for Mr. Warden for measurer of wooden bark. We have 5 against John. Congratulations. You can keep the measuring kit for one more year. That closes Article 4, and that brings us to Article 5, the election of Assistant Town Moderator. Our old town Assistant Town Moderator moved out of town, moved to air, so I don't have an assistant. So at this point, soon as we go through the screens, we're going to open Article 5. And we Okay, so like I started to say, right now, we are without an Assistant Town Moderator. So what I'm going to do now is open it up. If you have to make a nomination, please use the raise hand button. Mr. Rarick has raised his hand. Mr. Rarick?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Brian Rarick, Precinct 8. I would like to nominate Town Meeting Member Adam Oster of Precinct 3.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rarick. Thank you, Mr. Foskett. We have Mr. Peter Fuller.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to nominate from Precinct 9, Michael Ruderman. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have any other, any other nominations? We have nominations for Mr. Adam Oster and Mr. Michael Ruderman. I'll close nominations. So what I'm going to do now is offer both Mr. Ruderman and Mr. Oster 2 minutes' time to tell us why we should vote for them. And first, we'll bring up Mr. Ruderman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Michael Ruderman, Precinct 9. I am very pleased to have my name put in nomination for Assistant Moderator. It has been my privilege to be a member of this meeting. Now I'm beginning my 21st year, and I have truly enjoyed every one of those years of service. I've learned a lot by watching, listening, studying. And I have experience in my both professional work and in experience with a number of nonprofit boards in organizing and conducting and moderating small and large meetings. I would like to, I think I would like the job very much, and I think I bring a lot of years of experience that would apply to it. And I used to have my name in nomination, Mr. Fuller. Thank you so much. And that's all.
Okay, Mr. Ruderman, I'll bring up Mr. Oster.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Oster, Precinct 3. I've been in town meetings since 2006. I've made many friends and collegial relationships here. And some of you know me, perhaps from my work on the committee that brought electronic voting to town meeting. I'm asking for votes today because I value this institution, both as a means of government and for civic engagement. I hope it will continue to be relevant to town residents for at least another generation. That is a team effort that rests on all of us. But it reflects my orientation to this job and to town meeting generally. I'm ready to play this role, if you choose me, based on my experience and on the training that I've already received. So I'd like to ask my fellow town meeting members for their votes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Oster. All right, I'm now going to, because we only have a 1 yes, 2 no, 3 abstain. I've asked Town Clerk Brazil to put two names in a hat, and she's going to pick those names out serially. The first one will be for number 1, and the second one will be for number 2. So Ms. Brazil, can you give us the pecking order of the candidates?
Yes, I can, Mr. Moderator. The first person nominated was Adam Oster, and he will be number 1.
Thank you. And I assume that Mr. Ruderman will be number 2.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So Mr. Karowski, can we bring up the vote on this article? So while he does that, remember, if you are unable to enter your vote through the portal, please chat it. And if you can't do that, please call Ms. Brazil. So navigate back to the participate page, and Mr. Karowski is now going to open and confirm voting. So if you want Mr. Oster, you'll vote number 1. If you want Mr. Ruderman, you'll vote number 2. If you get the little spinning wheel, refresh your page and try again. So we have 30 seconds left to vote. If you need to chat your vote, now is the chance to do that. It looks like all of our verbal votes have been cast. Oh, we have one more. We all set, Ms. Sullivan? Nope, not yet. Okay. It takes a while to get the votes cast. We have, she has to open up a different window in the voting portal, find the person who's chatted to her, vote for them, wait for it to confirm, and then go on to the next one. So there she has to go through the same, Ms. Sullivan's going through the same exercise that we do. We have a point of order from Ms. Greenfield.
Sorry, I'm just confused as to whether the vote number 1 is, like, we vote yes for the first candidate and no for the second candidate, the way
Well, well, we, yeah, we're actually only using the 1 and the 2 because yes and no kind of sounds positive and negative, but we don't want to have that connotation for either of the candidates. We're only going with 1 for Mr. Oster and 2 for Mr. Ruderman.
But on the screen, it says 1 dash yes and 2
Yeah, I can't, we can't, we can't reprogram the program that quickly.
But just confirming, if you vote the 1 dash yes, you're voting for the Adam Oster, and if you vote 2 dash no, you're voting for Ruderman. Is that right?
That's correct, Ms. Greenfield.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think everyone's voted, so let's close voting. And we have 126 for Mr. Oster and 108 for Mr. Ruderman. I declare Mr. Oster to be the winner of the election for the Assistant Town Moderator. I don't know if congratulations are in order or not. Congratulations, Mr. Oster. Okay, that brings us, that closes Article 5. And would bring us to, in the order of things, to Article 6. Now, at this point in time, I want to focus on the consent agenda because several of the upcoming articles are on the consent agenda, so. Adam, can we bring up a picture of the, do you have the consent agenda? Well, once we go through all the screens, I'm sorry. Mr. Timor Yontar has a point of order.
Timor Yontar, Precinct 7. Mr. Moderator, I rise to a point of order regarding an article on the consent agenda. Article 76, appropriation to the Long-Term Stabilization Fund.
Yes.
Is on Agenda 1. And my question is whether it should be on Agenda 2 because I have read that it is a 2/3 vote. Is that correct?
I've spoken to Town Councilman Mr. Heim. Mr. Heim tells me that Article 76 is properly on the majority vote. It only takes a majority vote to put money into a stabilization fund, and it's a 2/3 vote to remove funds from a stabilization fund. So for 76, we're appropriating to that fund so that it's properly on the majority vote consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yontar. Just so you all know, that Timor had asked me that question earlier, so I was able to get a response for his question from Mr. Heim. Okay, so we're bringing up the consent agenda, which you all have, which was circulated last Friday. And we also had the benefit of Mr. Schlickman's annotations explaining it a little more what each of those articles are. So if you look back at this point, while Adam brings that up for us on
Mr. Moderator?
I see Ms. Friedman's point of order. Yep.
And which document would you like me to open? The annotated one from?
No, my, the Town Moderator Consent Agenda. So what's Ms. Friedman's point of order?
Mr. Moderator, this is Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15. And I just wanted to point out on Article 23, the vote is actually no action on Article number 21, not on Article number 23. So if that could be changed
Hold on.
So that we are actually voting on the fact article.
Yes, the, I got a confirmation from Attorney Heim today that that, and I'll just bring him up right now to confirm with us, that is a typographical article under number 23. Mr. Heim, can you confirm that, please? Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Appreciate that.
Good evening, Doug Heintown Council. Mr. Moderator, if I may, I'll note that the three Scrivener's errors in the Select Board report and the pages, so folks may correct them.
Yes.
First, as Ms. Friedman notes, the Affordable Overlay vote, it should read no action to be taken on Article 23, not Article 21. That's page 30 of the Select Board report. Page 30, that no action should be taken on Article 23, under Article 23, not 21. Second, on Article 26, page 37, it should read voted that the Select Board rather than the Board of Select. It's obviously an outdated reference. So it should read on page 37, the CDBG article, it should read voted that the Select Board, not the Board of Select. And then lastly, in Article 14, page 19, line 4. Article 14, page 19, line 4, of the underlying text, there's a set of brackets that should be parentheses. So it should read, open parentheses, including paint, closed parentheses, not open bracket, including paint, closed bracket. Those are the three Scrivener's errors that were identified. I hope that you can make those corrections as administrative corrections. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Ms. Friedman, to other folks who noted these Scrivener's errors.
Thank you very much, Ms. Heim. We will make those corrections that you just noted administratively on those three articles. Did everyone got those? It was Article 14, the brackets should be parentheses. Article 26, it should read voted that the Select Board. And on Article 23, it should read voted that no action be taken on Article 23. So go ahead and make those in your Select Board reports. Now we have a point of order from Ms. Bloom.
Nancy Bloom, Precinct 18.
What's your point of order, madam?
On Article 13, on page 7 of the FinCom report, I believe on the third line, it should say clause 18 rather than clause 18.
On which article, ma'am?
Article 13.
Yeah.
On about holidays, the Juneteenth holiday. And on the 1, 2, the third line down, in accordance with clause 18 of Section 7 of Chapter 4, rather it says with clause 18.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I don't see on the FinCom report.
In the FinCom report.
FinCom?
Yes. Yellow cover, yellow cover, Financial Committee for.
Oh, I see.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, this is Doug Heintown Council.
Yep.
So we can definitely note that the controlling motion is by the Select Board, so we
That's correct.
Correct the FinCom report. Thank you very much, Ms. Bloom. The good news is the controlling motion is the Select Boards.
Yes, Mr. Heim's correct. They were just noting on it, but we'll make that correction in the FinCom report as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Bloom.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Gordon Jamison has a request to speak, and usually we don't take speakers on the consent agenda, so I'm going to take Mr. Jamison's request to speak as a point of order of some sort. Mr. Jamison, what's your point of order?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me? Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12.
Yes.
I only raise my hand because I spent a considerable time developing the annotated consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
You attributed that to Mr. Schlickman.
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry, Gordon. It is Mr. Jamison did it.
Otherwise, I would have been quite, and while I I tried to develop something that would be useful to the body at your request. Hopefully, everyone has that in front of them, so it can school their decisions on the consent agenda. And I hope that as many articles will remain on it. I tried to be neutral on my interpretation of the comments of each reporting body. And hopefully, this will speed us towards the articles, as I communicated by email to folks to members, the real immediate thorny issues that are before us this, this spring. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison, and I apologize again for that misattribution.
No issues. Apparently, I have the Paul Schlickman look-alike contest going on. I don't know how that happened.
I don't either.
Maybe I should lose some weight.
Oh, my goodness. We're going to keep it civil, sir. Okay, so I'm going to, what I'm going to do is you'll, on your voting portal, you'll notice we now have a button that says, "Remove from Consent Agenda." Oh, we got Ms. Friedman's point of order, correct? Yeah, I think we did. You have a button that says, "Remove from Consent Agenda." Here we go. If you want to remove an article, not that I'm advocating you want to, we'll do it. But you would hit that Remove from Consent Agenda, confirm your action, and if it is a no-action article, I'm going to ask you if you have a substitute motion for it. Otherwise, you're move on. Okay, so does Beth Ann have another point of order? Ms. Friedman?
Hi, Mr. Moderator. This is Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct Fifteen. And there's another clerical error. And this one is in Article Thirty-three of the ARB report, that's page eleven, under amended section five-point-three-point-two-two-point-A. The second state, state unit attic areas with headroom measured from subfloor to the bottom of the roof structure of seven feet, and then it's crossed out three inches or more. I don't think they intended to cross out seven feet or more. Just the three inches. Is that clear?
I, I, I see that. I don't know what they intended to cross out or not. Either we're gonna have to get a clarification right now from Miss Rachel Zamboli, pronounced her last name wrong, or we're going to remove it from the consent agenda and deal with it during the regular course. So my suggestion is why don't we remove it when it gets to that point, if we have a question, unless Rachel wants to give us a clarification. I think that's the best we can do, Ms. Friedman. Hi.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
This is Jennifer Raitt, the Director of Planning and Development, speaking on behalf of the Redevelopment Board.
Hello, Ms. Raitt.
Thank you. Permit me to just state that, yes, Ms. Friedman is correct. It should be edited. We actually have reserved that for Article Thirty-three, when we intend to then amend it, to then add in or do the correction that she is talking about. We just did not couple the two articles together. It does not need to be edited, this particular article.
She's talking about Article Thirty-three.
It's amended in a different article.
Okay, very good. Okay, is that the answer to your question, Ms. Friedman?
Not really.
Yeah, she's gonna fix it somewhere else.
Right, but that's what we are agreeing to in this article.
Well, if you're unsatisfied, take it off.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Jamison?
Thank you, Ms., oops, thank you, Ms. Moderator, Gordon Jamison, Precinct Twelve. Very quickly, in the question and answers, I've posted the link to the, to the annotated consent agenda for the education of the members. That's all. Thank you very much, Ms. Moderator.
Okay, they could also get that through the ATM twenty-twenty-one docs on their participate page. It's nine-thirty-five. So before we get on with the consent agenda, let's take our ten-minute break. The staff has been on the computer for almost two and a half hours, and they need to take a ten-minute break, and we all need a few-minute break. We'll come back when, after the ten minutes, and I'll start reading through the articles. At first, the majority consent agenda, we'll vote on that, then we'll do the two-thirds vote consent agenda and vote on that. Okay, so let's start a ten-minute clock, and we're gonna take our break now. Go. Thank you very much. Okay, we're back. So I just have one question, and it's, we're having issue with one town meeting member who doesn't seem to be able to get his vote in in any fashion. Is he not able to get in the portal, Ms. Brazil? Oh.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I mean, I think that's true. But I haven't gotten an update from IT. He isn't in the portal now, so there isn't a way to manually enter anything.
I see. Oh, so he's not a listed member?
Correct. There's an empty spot in that precinct.
Oh, we're just gonna have to deal with that tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm not sure what we can do for that.
Right, that was my question. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brazil. Okay, Ms. Memmon has a point of order, so let's take Ms. Memmon's point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderators, or in Memmon, Precinct Twenty-one. I see on the two lists, the consent agendas, I see in Gordon Jamison's Consent Agenda, there's Article Seventy-eight listed. And on your Consent Agenda, Mr. Moderator, I do not see seventy-eight, Article Seventy-eight listed. Is there a reason for the two differences?
Mine's the official one.
Oh. But he hasn't made.
It may have been taken off the consent agenda after I gave him the rundown. There was some that were, there were some that were removed. And the tree canopy one, I believe, the, there is now a amendment on that consent, on that article. So I took it off the consent agenda, seeing that we have an amendment.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, back to the business at hand. What we're gonna do is I am going to read through these articles. And if you wish to move a article from the consent agenda, hit the Remove from Consent Agenda, we'll see you bringing that up. And we'll, I'll ask you if it's a no-action article, what you're, what you're thinking about, and if you haven't an amendment. And otherwise, we're gonna move right on. Okay, so we'll take a second on each one. Article Six. So everybody should have their consent agenda out. Now, Adam, we should be showing the Moderate Debate page, so we can see if someone. So Ms. Gruber wants to remove Article Six. Okay. Ms. Malofcheck wants to remove Article Six. Okay, so Article Six is off. Check. And Gruber. Article Eight. So we're gonna clear the queue. Article Eight. Does anyone want to take Article Eight off? Mr. Levy has a point of order. Mr. Levy? Mr. Levy has a point of order. Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dave Levy, Precinct 80. Question, if you are raising your hand to remove something from the consent agenda, do we need to know that you, you have an actual motion in hand, an alternative motion?
Well, if they may, if it's a no action, you should have a alternative motion in hand. But if it's a regular article that is just on the consent agenda, because it's something like dog fines and they just wanna kind of, clerk just wants to kind of clean up the action. And I have it on the consent agenda because of that, and if you want to remove it, just to debate it, we don't need an alternate substitute motion of any sort. But if there are substitute motions or amendments already on the table, it's not on the consent agenda.
I see. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yep. So we'll go back to number eight, Article eight. I'm not gonna hesitate too long on each one. Article nine. Article 10. Article 11. Article 12. Article 13. Article 14. Article 16. Article 17. Article 18. Article 19. Article 23. Article 26. Article 27. Article 37. Article 42. Article 47. Article 50. Article 51. Article 52. Article 53. Article 57. Article 58. Ms. Friedman wants to remove 58. Ms. Crowder has a point of order. We're not doing any debate, Ms. Friedman. What's your point of order, Ms. Crowder?
Yes, you called Article 17 as part of the consent, asking about it as, as being on the consent agenda. I don't see it in my copy here. That's your copy.
Perhaps you have an older one. The proponent of that article, Mr. Select Board Member Len Diggins, asked me to put it on the consent agenda. And I revised the consent agenda, so as of Friday afternoon at about 4:30, a revised consent agenda was up, and that had Article 17 on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Article 62. Article 63. Article 64. Article 65. Article 66. Article 68. Article 71. Article 72. Article 73. Article 74. Article 76. Article 79. Article 80. Article 81. Article 82. Article 83. Article. So 83, Carol Band is removing 83. And Ms. Malofcheck has a point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Town Moderator. Just confirming that 78 is no longer on the consent agenda. I know you mentioned that verbally earlier, but I just wanna confirm it.
Yeah, it's not on there, and I didn't call it out.
I know you didn't. I'm just, I'm just confirming.
Works. Yeah, that's true. It's not on there, Beth. Yeah, it's not on there. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
We have a clarification in the Q and A where Beth Ann Friedman wanted Article 53 removed and not Article 57.
Oh. She wants position reclassification removed. Very good. Well.
She has a point of order now as well. We want confirmation.
Okay. Ms. Friedman, what's your point of order? So she's. Does she have a point of order? I don't see her. Okay, so Ms. Friedman has asked us to take 53 off position reclassification and put 58 back on appropriation transportation infrastructure fund. All right, so that brings us now, Article 83 has been removed by Ms. Band. Now we have Article 84. Ms. Band, we're not taking speakers now. If we got what you want to do wrong, please use the point of order. I'm sorry. Bring Carol up. Let's see what she has to say.
I wanted to remove 81, 83.
80. Oh, very good, Ms. Band. Thank you.
For triggering.
So the design corridor competition, Ms. Band is removing Article 81, and she's leaving Article 83 on. So 81 is off. Thank you, Ms. Band. I appreciate that. Article 80, soon as we clear Carol, and Beth Ann's back. What's your point of order, Beth Ann?
Mr. Moderator, I didn't have a chance to remove number 62 from the consent agenda, partly because you were going through the numbers so fast that you were way past that by the time I got to the button.
You want to take Article 62 committees and commissions off the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Okay, we're back on track. Article 84. Joanne Preston has it. Remove Article 84. Article 85. Nope, gotta clear Joanne. Article 85. Article 86. Article 87. Article 88. Article 89. Oh, Lori Leahy is taking 88 off. I'm not sure what Judith thinks he's gonna speak about, because we're not doing any debates right now. Mr. Gordon Jamison has a point of order. Mr. Jamison, what's your point of order?
Gordon. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. Consistent with your introduction, does the person removing the most recent article from the consent agenda have a substitute motion filed?
For 88? Maybe that's what she's gonna tell us. But if it's for the 48-hour rule, I would have liked to have gotten it before this.
Thank you very much, Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jamison. All right, what's Lori Leahy have to say?
I'm mute. Hello, Lori Leahy, Precinct 21. I actually was, I wasn't fast enough. I was going for Article 87.
Okay.
But I do not have a motion. So.
Do you plan on getting us one anytime soon?
No, I'm going to say no to that.
Okay, so without a substitute motion, there's nothing to debate when it gets to that point of the, of the agenda. And if we have nothing to debate, we're just gonna move no action. So unless you plan on submitting a substitute motion on number 87, do you still want to remove it?
I do not, and I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, good. So we're gonna leave 87 and 88 on, Ms. Leahy?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And thank you for, Mr. Jamison. Article 89. Article 90. Okay. Oh, Mr. Yantar has a point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Timor Kai Yantar, Precinct 7. Same question as Mr. Jamison had regarding Article 84, taken off the consent agenda, which was a no action article. Is there a substitute or an amendment?
I don't know. Ms. Joanne Preston took that one off. Ms. Preston, do you plan on giving a substitute motion? Ms. Preston?
Yes, well, I oppose it, so I guess I need to have a substitute motion. Yes.
Are you going to submit a substitute motion within the next few days?
Yes.
Very good. The sooner you get that to us, the better, because right now it's a no action. Because I did personally invite the Housing Authority by personal invitation extended to Mr. John Griffin, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. So that's why the proponent removed it from the did not submit a substitute motion.
I just don't think it belongs in town meeting.
That's right. That's what we're doing. It's a no action. It's no action.
All right, well, then we'll just eliminate it.
That's what we're doing. No action eliminates it.
And that's fine.
Okay, so you want to leave it on?
If it's no action, yes.
Correct. It is. Thank you. We'll leave it on the consent agenda. Okay, so I got two more requests to remove. Are those for Article 90, which was the last one? So Ms. Weber, which one are you trying to remove? And thank you, Mr. Yantar. So Ms. Weber, which article do you wish to remove? Janice?
Janice Weber, Article, Precinct 21, Article 90.
Okay. Are you gonna give us a substitute motion on Article 90?
No, I just wanted to be able to ask questions about it on the night of its proposal.
But unless there's a unless there is a substitute motion for no action.
It doesn't say no action.
Hold on, Janice. Oh, you're right. Okay, it's off.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was too many things for me to keep track of in my head. And, okay, so that's off. So we've taken a few articles off the consent agenda. Article six. Article 53, 62, 81, and 90. So what we're gonna do is take one vote right now on the majority vote articles on the consent agenda, then we'll do the two-thirds votes. So Adam, Mr. Krawski, do you have two votes set up? Ms. Friedman has a point of order. Beth Ann has discovered the point of order button. What's your point of order, Ms. Friedman?
Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15. You also agreed to take Article 33 of the consent agenda.
43 is not on.
No, 33.
33. I don't have 33 on my consent agenda.
Did you take it off?
It was never on.
Article 33 is on the consent agenda.
I beg to differ. I got it right in front of me.
Okay. It's on mine. I'm confused.
I haven't got it. 23, 39, 27, 43.
Mr. Moderator, I think the Article 33 is on the two-thirds consent agenda, which Town Meeting hasn't reviewed yet.
Yeah, I haven't done that one yet.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Quick eyes of the young. Okay, so we're gonna take one vote on the majority vote consent agenda. So if you're able to scroll over to the portal page, if you can't vote in the portal, please use the chat. And if for any reason you can't chat it in, telephone vote it into Ms. Brazil, 7813163071. So go ahead and initiate voting, Mr. Krawski. Okay, so refresh page if you may. So one, yes, for the consent agenda. To vote each of those articles as reported in the various reports. So vote one for yes for the consent agenda. And vote no if you don't want to vote for the consent agenda, and you want to go through each of those articles individually. So one, yes, to vote for the articles in the consent agenda as reported in all of the various reports. Okay, Ms. Magliazzo has a point of order. So let's hear what her point of order is. So let's see what her point of order is. We'll leave voting open while that point of order is here. Sophie Magliazzo, precinct eight.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Sophie Magliazzo, precinct eight. Just a point of clarification. I thought I had understood previously that a yes vote would be a yes on each individual and a no vote would be a no on each individual.
No.
No.
A yes vote is you're voting in the same manner as in the reporting reports. So if the select board has a vote of no action, you're voting no action. If they have a vote, if the FinCom has a vote to appropriate money for something that we just voted, long-term stabilization fund, you're voting in favor of that. So we're voting in the same manner as the reporting reports votes.
Okay, so and these are recorded individually then?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all the verbal votes are entered. All the chat votes are entered, so let's close voting. We have a hundred percent vote. The motion's passed two-hundred-and-twenty-two in favor of the consent agenda. And one, no, and two abstentions. We don't count extensions. So it's a vote on all of those articles as reported in the various reports, and I so declare it two-hundred-and-twenty-two to one. That closes all of those different articles. That now brings us to the majority, the two-thirds vote articles. There aren't as many of those. So once we cycle through the screens of how everybody voted, we'll get to that.
Mr. Moderator?
Sir?
We had a request to repeat which articles were removed.
We removed articles six, fifty-three, sixty-two, eighty-one, and ninety. Okay. We have three points of order. We'll take them up in order they appear. First, Ms. Friedman.
Mr. Moderator, that was, this is Beth Anne Friedman, precinct fifteen. That point of order request was in error.
Ah.
Taking it off.
Yes, there is a way to take those down. You can remove your points of order and you can remove your request to speak. Once you touch that button and you've confirmed your action, the button changes to remove point of order or remove request to speak. So if you just go through and cycle through, it would take you off of that. So that's just a little tutorial on the use of the page. So we had two other points of order. Are they gone now as well? I guess so. So we're now to the two-thirds points, the two-thirds articles. I'm going to read through the several of those. There aren't as many. Article twenty-eight. Article thirty-one. Mr. Holland wants to take article thirty-one off. Okay, Mr. Roderick Holland. Article thirty-two. Mr. Holland, what's your point of order, Mr. Holland?
Mr. Moderator, I was trying to take twenty-eight off, not thirty-one.
Okay. Let me just check something. Twenty-eight, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Leahy, which one are you trying to take off?
Lori Leahy, precinct twenty-one. I was also trying to take off twenty-eight, but it was too slow.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Nope, I'll go a little slower. That's okay. So we're gonna leave thirty-one on. Twenty-eight is off. All right. Thirty, article thirty-two. Article thirty-three. Beth Anne Friedman wants to take that one off. Okay. Article thirty-four. Article thirty-six. Article fifty-nine. And article sixty. Okay, now we'll take one combined vote on those articles. We're having, we've removed article twenty-eight and article thirty-three. So we'll take one vote on those. A yes vote is to vote in the same manner as in the reporting board's report. A no vote is to vote against those reported votes. So if you can't vote, use the chat. And otherwise, let's authorize voting. Ms. Memmon has a point of order. So go ahead and let's start voting and then we'll take Ms. Memmon. Yes, Serena.
I thought there was a remove from consent agenda that was still listed there, but it's gone. So my mistake. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's open voting. So a yes vote is to vote in favor of the consent agenda and the votes as listed in the reporting board or committee's report. A no vote is to vote against them.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Point of clarification. This vote is a majority vote or a two-thirds vote?
It's a two-thirds vote.
Okay.
All of these vote, all of these articles are two-third votes articles.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So go ahead and vote. You got twenty-one seconds left. And if you have trouble with the portal, please use the chat. And if you have trouble with that, call Ms. Brazil. Okay, we'll just wait to manually enter the votes. There is a comment from one of the town meeting members, Ms. Kristen Pennerom. She comments that if she gets the spinning icon, it never goes away, but if you hit the refresh button on your window or on the page itself, it refreshes and then you can vote again and it works fine. That's just a database issue that we're having. So if you get that spinny wheel, just refresh. And thank you, Ms. Pennerom. Okay, we all set, Gabby and Emily? Yep, all right, we're all set. Let's close voting. Okay, we have two-hundred-and-twenty-eight in favor and one against the consent agenda. So all of those articles pass with the recommended votes in the reports as listed. I thank the town meeting members for putting up with me in the consent agenda. That probably just saved us about five or six nights. All right, that closes those articles. Ms. Patricia Warden has a point of order. Ms. Warden, what's your point of order?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Patricia Warden.
Pat.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we'll get an awful feedback. Can you shut off either John's speakers or microphone? We have two, we have two computer audio devices going at once. You have to shut one of them off.
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me or are you still getting interference?
Well, we're getting a little echo. We're still getting it, but go ahead and give us your point.
It's actually, I just wanted to say that for three times I have lost my connection and John has lost his twice. And in trying to get the connection back, I was not able to vote in at least one or two of those instances. I just wanted to know that our connection is very flaky in both cases. Thank you.
If, Pat, if that happens, you can telephone vote your in, your vote into Ms. Brazil, and I'll give you her phone number.
Yes, thank you. I have that. I wasn't quick enough. I was trying to get John at least to be able to vote. Thank you.
Well, we'll, we'll kind of wait till we get both of those until we get you cleared up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that, that clears those articles. That brings us to article six. So we're gonna, this will be the normal course from here on out. We are gonna look at the warrant. We're gonna see what article six is. We'll be showing you the loading. I think we got to get Adam a T-one line at home. So we have article six. We have the warrant. We had the recommended vote language. Town bylaw is hereby amended so as to eliminate term limits for certain CPAC, Community Preservation Act Committee members, so as to read as follows. And there's the recommended language that we'll be voting on. So we're gonna get rid of that at-large member. And strike that out. So that's what we're gonna do. We have no, does anyone wish to was the the town manager or the select board wish to give us their rationale here? Or do we go right to the right to see who wants to speak about it, which was Ms. Malafcheck? And Ms. Memmon has a point of order.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I did. This is Steve DeCoursey, the select board. I would like to give a little bit of context for this vote.
Very good, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hold on, let's add him, let Adam start your, your speaking clock. Okay, go ahead, Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, the select board by vote of five to zero supports this article to remove the term limits for at-large Community Preservation Act members. This applies to the four members that are selected jointly by the select board and the town manager. Just for a little history, when the Community Preservation Act Committee was created back in two thousand and fifteen, there was an amendment to the vote that created this, these term limits. And at the time, there was no history of the CPA committee. It was a new concept in Arlington and it was uncertain how it was going to work. And with the passage of time, we see it's been a very successful program. The Community Preservation Committee appears before the finance committee, before the select board, and before town meeting each year for approval of their recommendations. It's been a very open and transparent process. And for those reasons, and also due to the fact that there are no other committees in town that have term limits, we supported removing this. The passage of time has actually shown that it's very successful and some of the concerns that there may have been years ago have not played out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey. Anyone else wish to speak on this article? You had two people taking it off the consent agenda. Ms. Gruber?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rebecca Gruber, precinct eight. Yes, I wanted to have this warrant article be taken off so we could discuss it. Well, I appreciate Mr. DeCoursey's points. My thinking about having this warrant article recognize importunity, essentially, membership, is that it doesn't give us the opportunity to have other town residents step up and be a part of this committee. I did reach out to Mr. Helmuth when I saw this warrant article appear. He's the chair of this committee, I believe, and asked him about his rationale, whether he was in support of this warrant article. He mentioned the value of longevity and institutional knowledge. But this is in regard to just some of the members of this committee. And I think that the institutional knowledge of the other members would more than compensate for the learning curve of new members. And those new members would bring in a perspective that might be a value from the community different than who has been serving. Now, of course, if there was no one who wanted to step up and be a member of this committee, then I would see that a reappointment would make sense. But if there are other community members who want to participate in this committee, I think that taking away the idea of term limits will prohibit those people from getting that chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruber. Ms. Malafcheck?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Apologies. It's, I'm having difficulties with my screens tonight. I am opposed to this article six. I think we should preserve the term limits for the four seats. It's been stated when it was presented to the select board that the other seats have rotation themselves. And as we've all seen, it's a new committee and the members have come up to speed. As I believe, new members for the four seats will come up to speed. There are many town residents interested. town residents interested in activities in the town and in the activities, particularly that this committee benefits affordable housing and the other two components, which escaped me at the moment. But I think it's important to have diversity on the committees. We don't see a lot of that in Arlington. I think it's important to have turnover. We also don't see that. So that's why I support a negative vote on this article. I think we need some new faces, some younger faces, some faces we haven't seen yet. Thank you for allowing my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Malofcheck.
And Beth Malofcheck, Precinct Nine.
Thank you. Mr. Eric Kellmuth?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric helped with the precinct twelve. And I'm speaking in my capacity tonight as a town meeting member. I want to just offer correction to previous speaker's remark. I am no longer Chair of the CPA Committee or on the committee. I needed to resign that post when I was sworn in as a Select Board member. But again, tonight, speaking in my capacity as a town meeting member. So I just wanted to offer a little perspective on this. First of all, this, there's no currently appointed committee member to whom this would imminently apply. But I think that, as I did lead the committee for a number of years, it became clear that CPA is, is complex. And I think for, for that reason, and also because the other representatives, the unappointed representatives from other committees and commissions can and do rotate, that there was, there is real value in allowing the Select Board appointees some longevity precisely for that institutional memory, if they so desire. That said, we've actually had in practice quite a bit of turnover. At least three of the Select Board appointees over the six years or so of the committee have resigned mostly for leaving town or doing other things. And so we, we actually have had fresh, fresh ideas and perspectives there. And finally, I just reiterate a point that Mr. Decourcy made, and that is that no other board and commission in Arlington has term limits. I would respectfully suggest to town meeting that if we want to have a discussion about term limits, that that should apply much more broadly to boards and commissions and our philosophy of governance, and not specifically to one committee without a very clear rationale for why that's the case. And I would respectfully suggest that that rationale does not exist specific to the CPA Committee. And therefore, I would urge town meetings' support of this motion so that the committee can enjoy the same potential benefits of longevity and institutional memory and experience that other boards and commissions in towns currently enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helmuth. And congratulations on your recent win. Ms. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Clarissa Rowe, Precinct Four. I want to reiterate what Eric said, and I also want to say right now, we have two openings on the committee. I am the acting chair. I will never be the chair again. I'm the acting chair. And I would really love to have people that want to be on this committee to please apply to be on the committee. We value the diversity of this town and we welcome people that want to learn about the Community Preservation Act, which supports affordable housing, open space, and historic preservation. So I urge you to please vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rowe. Mr. Gregory Christiana?
Greg Christiane, Precinct Fifteen. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I do appreciate the the comments by Miss Malofcheck and Miss Gruber about bringing fresh diverse faces to these committees. I think that's a very important point. I do have a question for, I'm not sure, I guess either the Town Council or members of the Select Board who might know the answer to this question. So if the current term limit is reached for a particular position, and there are no new like applicants to fill that position, the current language, if I understand it, like would state that the person currently in that position who's reached their term limit would not be able to reapply. Is that true?
The current language is the waiting period of three years shall be imposed on any member of the committee after serving six consecutive years if they wish to rejoin. So after six years in the committee, they would have to be off the committee for three years before they could ask to be reappointed to that committee under the current language.
I see. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Culverhouse, Lynette Culverhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lynette Culverhouse, Precinct Eleven. And I actually think that we need to have term limits on more of our committees. We have people who have been serving on committees for decades in our town, which is not is not good for our democracy and for allowing representation from many people in town. And I think the more we spread out the representation, the richer and better our town is. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anna Henkin?
Anna Henkin, Precinct Six. I also want to say that I support adding term limits to more of our committees. I'm actually really uncomfortable with how most of our committees don't have term limits. The addition of term limits means that we have to ask the question of whether or not someone needs to still be on a committee every once in a while. And it's important to have that question asked, and it's important to have transparency in that process. The more new people we get in, the more perspectives we have, and the better we can respond to changing needs in the town. Institutional knowledge is important, but so is allowing the next generation to take over things. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. Matthew Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Matthew Rick, Precinct Eleven. I'd like to move the question and all debate before it.
Okay, we motion terminate debate in the article and all matters before it. Do we have a second on that, Mr. Foskett?
Second.
Second, okay, it's a non-debatable motion. So we're gonna now go right to a motion to terminate debate. So we're bringing up a motion to terminate debate. So town meeting members, you'll slowly navigate back to the portal. We're gonna open the chat window. If you can't use the portal to vote, use the chat. In worst case scenario, call Ms. Brazil, 781-316-3071. So Adam's now confirming the vote. And voting is now active. And Ms. Memmon, is that a new point of order for Ms. Memmon? So we'll bring Ms. Memmon up, but the voting window is open. If you wish to terminate debate, go ahead and vote one, yes, to terminate. And two, no, to continue speaking and continue the debate. What's your point of order, Ms. Memmon?
Yeah, the point of order is, this is a two-thirds vote, correct, for this termination of debate?
That's correct. And it would, if you'll see, when we get to the voting window screens, it actually will say that, and it'll tell us if it was a two-third vote took the day or not.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anyway, folks, you gotta let me do my job, which means calling the vote. So it says right down there, requires two-thirds vote to pass. So we got this, folks. So go ahead and vote. One for yes to terminate debate, two for no to continue to talking. All the verbal votes have been entered. We've got a couple chats. So some people, when they chat, they vote in, they're giving a explanation on what they're doing. All we need you to say is yes or no. We don't need you to tell us how you're voting or what you're voting on, just a yes or a no. Miss Sullivan's still diligently working away over there, so we'll let her finish. Several town meeting members you haven't voted yet. You should go ahead and do that now before I close voting in a minute. So there's a there's a remark in the chat that during the that we're going to allow the town meeting members to second the motions. As you'll see on Wednesday, that button that said remove from consent agenda is gonna be recast as a second button. So Mr. Foskett will be relieved of his duties come Wednesday, and town meeting members will then be able to second motions. So we just for tonight, we had to go to the old way and have Mr. Foskett do it. But otherwise, come Wednesday, you will all be able to second by using the recast button. Okay, we're all set with the verbal votes. We're all set with the other votes. So let's close voting. The motion passes by eighty-three percent. The vote, the debate is terminated, one hundred and ninety in the affirmative and thirty-nine in the negative. So that, once we run through the screens, we'll go right to the vote on Article Six. Okay, so we're gonna open a new article. That will bring us to Article Six. We're gonna go right to the vote. So same drill. If you can't vote on the portal, you can use the chat or you'll call Ms. Brazil. It's the worst case scenario. Go back to the voting portal, town meeting members. And voting is now open. So go ahead and refresh your pages. If you want to amend the bylaw as recommended by the Select Board and eliminate those term limits on the community at large members, you will vote one for yes. If you want to keep those term limits, you will vote two for no. So one for yes, two for no. Good to go, Emily? Okay, let's close voting. Motion passes by vote of hundred sixty-four. And the affirmative, seventy in the negative. It's a seventy percent vote. It passes, and I so declare it. And that ends Article Six. And you have to run through our screens so everyone can check your votes. Okay, let's open a new article. We'll go right to Article Seven. Okay, bylaw amendment rock removal requirements. So we have the recommended vote of Select Board. To
Mr. Moderator, this is Doug Hightown, Council. My understanding is Mr. Decourcy is asking me to present on this.
Yes, I was gonna go to Mr. Decourcy to present. If there's no nothing else, you want to scroll right to the bottom there, Adam? There's nothing else on this article. So Mr. Decourcy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And Mr. Moderator, the Select Board recommends positive action on this article, and I would like to ask Attorney Heim to make the presentation on this article.
Very well. Did you start the clock, Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a brief slideshow that I'm gonna show to try to help sort of make this a little bit clearer. Thank you, Members of Town Meeting, Doug Hightown, Council. Just some background on what this article is about. So the town has received over years, both before and during COVID, a number of complaints and concerns about residential construction projects that involve extensive excavation of rock or rock ledge. Typically, what we've seen is that builders are underestimating the time and the disruption caused, very specifically by mechanical rock chipping. The public health concerns that are raised by this are chiefly noise complaints and vibration complaints, but there's also concerns about debris and dust, a couple other public health and safety issues. Our current town bylaws can regulate noise. They can regulate open excavations with respect to barriers to protect from incidental damages. And there's a few other things that we can do with respect to butter notices about site plans, hours of operations. And there's a few other things that we can do with respect to butter notices about site plans, hours of operations, and some of butter property protections, as well as site maintenance requirements. And these things are layered a little bit on top of some public health and code, codabilities that the town has. What the town bylaws can't do is currently stop work. You can't pursue damages on behalf of a butters. And we can't require builders to engage in a specific type of excavation. One of the things that's been very clear to the town is that there's a real tension between enforcement of existing bylaws and provisions and the completion of this job, of these types of jobs. So then on one hand, people get a little bit of relief when folks come in and say, hey, you're being too loud, you're operating past your hours. But on the other hand, what ends up happening is that extends the time of the job, and so there's more days of chipping. This article proposes something very simple. If you're going to excavate more than fifty cubic yards, which is basically a dumpster of rock, and this is mostly going to apply to new site development, you have to conduct a pre-blast survey in compliance with existing blasting regulations. This essentially forces a builder to engage in a butters within two hundred and fifty feet of the site. And to use some already established fire safety standards. The proposal before you has some fines for non-compliance. But also because of a very specific legal provision in the general laws, we can also require to engage this process before issuing a building permit, which is not typical for town bylaws. And that's basically it. It does not require blasting to happen. I know that that's one of the things that was contemplated by the warrant article, but the actual proposal in front of you is more measured than that. It also doesn't prohibit excavations. It may be pushing the boundaries a little bit of what we can do, but we've heard very consistent concerns about the level of disruption caused by rock chipping. There are some costs associated with it. The pre-blast survey is essentially a way of providing documentation of the existing physical condition of buildings and structures within two hundred and fifty feet. It requires bore hole and some other measures. The time and costs of this pre-blast idea or engagement is borne by the builders or property owners. There are also additional requirements and costs if they actually elect to engage in blasting. So they have to do a blast design plan, pre-blast analysis, things that require seismological reports, things that require a number of very specific property protections. They may require things like blasting mats depending on the scope of blasting. But in general, the benefits of blasting are that it is typically much faster. To our understanding, the fire department inspectional services, most town departments, it's been less disruptive than chipping, especially in terms of the duration of the project. Some builders may or may not really know about their options to engage in blasting rather than rock chipping. And it employs an existing regulatory scheme, which regulates transportation and use of blasting materials, notice and warning before blast, seismological surveys and mitigation measures, bonding requirements for blasting companies, and a complaint process for damages. I think I skipped over this part, but blasting is already allowed under the law, and it's locally administered by the fire department. In the interest of transparency, I want to note that there were some issues raised about blasting that a lot of us in the town hadn't heard before. Some residents noted negative experiences with blasting. There was a recent example where residents assert that blast warnings didn't happen or they didn't provide sufficient notice, that there were multiple days of blasting rather than a single day or, you know, a really short period of time. And that there are some issues with respect to whether blasting damage was apparent within the thirty day period you have to register a complaint. And then finally, there was some additional concerns about water runoff based on changing the topography. Now, the good news is we just passed an update to the stormwater bylaw. It's pretty significant and would open the door to greater regulation of how runoff and stormwater is basically treated after a site is altered, has an alteration more than three hundred and fifty square feet. So that's good news. The other good news is that I think both members of the public and some members of the town government had increased awareness about the rights and relief relative to blasting operations. So folks can file complaints with the fire department if blasting procedures aren't followed, or if there are damages to a house or other property as a result of blasting. So in summary, this is a moderate step to add a layer of process in rock removal intensive project. It allows for fines and it allows for withholding a permit, which is unusual and extraordinary measure of relief. It places some additional cost on builders and raises some awareness about options and rights under existing regulations in rock removal intensive sites. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. Okay, next on the speaking list was Ms. Dre.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Elizabeth Dre, Precinct Eight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I speak on behalf of the residents in Precinct Eight, where this has been a really a topic of a lot of debate and concern. And so on behalf of the residents of eight of precinct eight, I asked town meeting members to vote against this article. The concern is that there is no protection for the butters and the neighbors. So while the stated purpose of this bylaw is to, quote, protect the public from the noise, air quality, debris, and other potential adverse impacts, I don't believe that it actually achieves that goal. Currently, a developer has a choice to make if they want to spend money to do a study or not, but and then if they don't, they can't blast. But this requires them to spend that money, so it opens up a potential that perhaps they may not have pursued before. And therefore may lead to more blasting. And the problem is that there is no protection for butters and neighbors who live both within the two hundred and fifty square feet around the blasting area and beyond. As developers must only engage with the butters that live within two hundred and fifty feet, and the butters only have thirty days to make a claim for damage. So damage from blasting, including damage to foundations and change in the water runoff often lead to, which may lead to flooded basements, take longer than thirty days to show up, and then the the butters are out of luck. And while Attorney Heim says that there are ways that the neighbors can report damages to the fire department, or I'm not sure what, but that puts the burden on the neighbors to understand that they have those rights and assumes that they know their rights. Also, he talked about consistent concerns that he hears from people about rock chipping. I am hearing consistent concerns from people in precinct eight about rock blasting. So I just wanted to put that out there. And thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Coke?
Kevin Coke, Precinct sixteen. If I'm just a little bit confused because if blasting is so great, then why are people complaining about chipping? Does it is it incur a significant expense for the developer or what?
I don't know. Mr. Heim or Mr. DeCoursey?
Mr. Moderator, I'm happy to answer it, but but obviously defer to Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes, Mr. Heim, go ahead.
So in preparing this proposal to town meeting, the fire department, inspectional services, planning, and a couple other departments were consulted. Basically, there's expense that goes along with blasting that that doesn't go along with rock chipping necessarily, because there's a lot of reports and professional staff that have to be hired to generate these pre-blast surveys and engage in work. It seems, and this is anecdotal, I want to make that clear, that a lot of builders assume that the rock chipping will go pretty quickly and pretty smoothly, and the projects end up taking longer or end up being more difficult than they necessarily anticipate. So there's probably a little bit of a labor difference, too, between hiring a blasting company and engaging in excavation by rock chipping.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coke. Thank you, Mr. Heim. Ms. Allison Ampe? Kirsty Allison Ampe?
Thank you. Kirsty Allison Ampe, Precinct fifteen. I am raising concerns about this bylaw. My concern is that this may have the unintended consequence of pushing projects towards blasting. I'm concerned about that because of our family's personal experience with the Sims project. We live approximately a thousand feet, so well out of the blasting zone from Sims, but we're our houses in old style. It was built almost a hundred years ago, and it's on bedrock. And we thought pieces of our house had fallen off when they started doing blasting at Sims. There was no notification because we're not in the two hundred and fifty feet zone. It was, I made a bunch of calls at that time. It was very difficult not being in the butter to find out when blasting was going to occur. I was told that I couldn't find out because it was, there was concerns that like terrorists would use this information somehow. I don't, it was very strange. Anyway, we have some cracks in ceilings and things. It's hard to say if it was from the blasting or not, but I'm concerned that there's a lot of rock. I mean, the problem, the reason all of this coming up is because there is a lot of rock around here and that a lot of our houses are built on rock and that I understand that we're abiding by the state guidelines, but two hundred and fifty feet, at least in our experience, was not the right zone for, I mean, really didn't take into account the effects that we were seeing four times the distance away. Just to speak to Mr. Coke's point, I do understand about the chipping, too, though, because that's happened here also last year. And there's been chipping for months. And again, we were quite far away, but it was loud and disruptive. So I don't have a substitute motion, but I do. I'm more concerned right now about houses having significant damage than I am about the noise and disruption, but I don't think either of these are very good ideas. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ampe. Is there any amendment? Ms. Memmon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderators. During Amendment, Precinct twenty-one. I was curious about how many permits are, since this has already been issued by fire department permits, or this has been happening with the fire department permits. I was wondering how many far permits are usually put on for this blasting per year? Do we have any numbers? And also, okay.
No, go ahead. Ask your second question.
Second question was, where else or what other communities have they used blasting consistently? This is not a new technology, as I understand it. And I was just wondering, is this is used widely somewhere that we can learn about the runoff issues and so forth, which may be a problem that comes up, shows up much later.
We're going to get an answer for Ms. Memmon if we can, and then we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening. So, Mr. Heim, do you have the answers to her two questions, or will we, can we get those answers for her and come back with to them on Wednesday?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Doug Hightown, Council. I'd rather be precise and come back to her on Wednesday, because I don't think the fire chief is on on town meeting right now.
No, I don't see the chief.
Yeah, we can get answers about how many permits. I mean, this, it's a state law, so we know that it's pretty broadly employed throughout the Commonwealth. We'll try to get some information on comparable communities if that would be helpful to Ms. Memmon.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So we'll preserve our speaking list. So before we take our motion to four to adjourn for the evening, I'm going to ask if there are any notices of reconsideration. If you use the raised hand feature on Zoom to give us any notices of consideration, please do that now. While Adam figures out how to preserve our speakers list. So if you want to make a notice of reconsideration on any of the articles that we voted today, please do so by using the raise hand feature on Zoom. Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. And it's been seconded. Okay, all in favor, use the raise hand button if you don't want to adjourn. Otherwise, we'll see you on Wednesday. Someone is raising their hand. Let's see who that person is. See if they have a notice of reconsideration. Otherwise, we'll see you all on Wednesday. So people keep raising their hand and putting it down. So notice reconsideration, if you want to talk about any of the articles, we already voted. Now's your chance to give us notice that you want to do it, otherwise they are forever done. I see no reconsiderations. That adjourns tonight for the evening. And Ms. Crowder will get your point of order first thing on Wednesday. Okay, thank you all very much. Lane Crowder. Let's allow Lane to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Crowder.
Lane Crowder, Precinct nineteen. I just wanted to, for the benefit of people new, could we have a definition of notice of reconsideration?
So notice reconsideration is in our bylaws, if we voted all of these articles, if you want to speak, bring one of those articles back to life and bring it back up for debate. You have to give us notice of reconsideration tonight on the articles that were voted. Then at a future meeting, you would have to make a motion to reconsider. That would have to pass by a two-third vote, and you would have to have voted on the prevailing side of the article in order to give the notice of reconsideration, which I can then check against the voting records, make sure you really did. And then you would have to convince me that you have new information that's worthy of reopening the article up. So if you think you have all of those things covered and you want to re-debate one of the articles we already debated and voted on tonight, you can go ahead and give us a notice of reconsideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Charlie Foskett, Precinct Eight, Chairman of the Finance Committee. I'd like to serve notice of reconsideration of Articles fifty through seventy-nine, I'm sorry, through seventy-six, having voted on the prevailing side.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Foskett. So just for the members who are still here, the FinCom always gives notice of reconsideration on the financial articles that we vote in case there is a change in the budgets, and we have to go back and change those budgets in order to balance our budget. So FinCom will always give notice on theirs. So otherwise, I think we're good to go. We'll see you all on Wednesday night. Thank you.